Yeah, there's a tray of snacks back there. Somebody help.
Can I? Can I get it? Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call to order this regular meeting June 10th of the Sorbetes Central School District School Board. Couple of housekeeping things. Designation of exits are, we have one on each side of the building room, one at the back. Virginia, will you do roll call, please?
Sure, William Ball.
Here.
Christine Bella Rosa, here.
The Emerson Hall, here.
Michelle Gromaglia, here.
Tina Irizarry, here.
Carol Kelder, here.
Michael Meyer.
Here.
Stephriasi.
Here.
Timothy Wells.
Here.
Ready to stand for the pledge of allegiance? Where's the flag tonight? Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Ursig, our mission and business statements, please. Yeah, you can.
So here in Sorbetes, we provide equitable, engaging, inspiring, and holistic experiences that support academic, I'm sorry, support success and empowerment for students, families, and the community in a diverse and changing world. Our vision is to become a beacon of educational excellence where every individual is inspired to achieve their fullest potential.
Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is approval of minutes from our normal May 6th meeting and then the budget approval meeting of May 27th. Do I have a motion? By Mr. Wells, second by Ms. Kelder. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public recognition. So, public recognition is, recognition is a fancy term for public comment. So this is, when people in the audience who are here are able to address the board. We have two public comment sections. I'm going to reverse them tonight. Typically, the first one is for just what's on the agenda, and then the second one is for general. I'm going to make the first one general. I don't think we need a motion for that or anything. I'm not going to read the paragraph, but these are the same rules for anything. So when you, anybody who wants to address the board, please come up. This is still a little, a new scenario here with the table. You're able to either sit or grab the mic and stand. Most people stand. Please sign the sheet and then state your name, your address, and then your topic. So Jane Doe, 123 Main Street, budget, okay? There are, we already passed the budget. I think I know the topic that most people want to address, and that's the SRO. You can comment on anything you want, as long as it's respectful. There's going to be no attacks on anybody, on community members, members of the town board, members of our administration. If your comments are around the support of our current SRO, go ahead and say what you want to say, okay? Because, and this is, these are the general rules anyway. One more thing, two more things. There are, we allow three minutes. Nobody's going to stop you at 2:59 or 3:01. If you start to run long and there's a lot of people to talk, I may just kind of glance at my watch and kind of say, wrap it up. The other important thing is, is we are here to listen. We'll listen to everybody, and that's the important thing. It is a comment section. It is not a Q and A. The board is not going to answer questions. We're not going to get in a back and forth discussion. It's a comment section. We will take, if there are questions that we capture, that people really want answered, we'll capture them and then we'll figure out if it's something we can answer, if it's not a personnel issue or things like that, okay? So I just want to set those expectations, okay? Thank you. And I, people were like, you're going to have people showing up at the board tonight. I wish we had the people at, this many people at every board member. I think an issue in our school district in our town is apathy, and I like when people have passion about something, and that's what we have here tonight. So, who would like to go first? Right.
I'm Allison Maria.
Yeah, yeah, make sure, yeah, turn the, you want to turn the mic. You can, you can hold the mic. You can take it right out of that holder.
Yeah, slide it towards you.
People online. Yeah, I would take it right out. Yeah, there you go. I can hear you. That way, online can hear you.
So this is a letter to all of you from me and 600, and I don't even know what we're up to, over 650 concerned people that are in this district. Dear board members, I write to you on behalf of the Sorbetes Central School District community and over 650 concerned petitioners to respectfully request that school resource officer Travis Winchell be reinstated in his current position at Sorbetes High School. For the past eight years, Officer Winchell has earned the trust and respect of our students, the staff, and these families. He has consistently provided a sense of safety, guidance, and professionalism that has been a meaningful and lasting impact on the school community. His steady presence and relationships with students foster mutual respect and accountability, qualities that are increasingly rare and essential in our current school environment. Recently, the community became aware through informed channels of a disciplinary incident involving a student and Officer Winchell. To date, there has been no clear or official communication from the district regarding this matter. This absence of transparency is deeply concerning, especially given the district's routine outreach on much less consequential topics. When a longstanding, well-regarded SRO is suddenly either removed or reassigned without public explanation, speculation inevitably grows, and with it, community distrust. While we recognize the need for confidentiality in student matters, what has surfaced suggests that Officer Winchell was called upon by a staff member to help manage a student who was behaving in an unmanageable and disruptive way. By all accounts, he successfully de-escalated the situation, and the student was sent home for the remainder of the school day. Discipline remained in the hands of the district. The SRO's role was to support a safe resolution. Isn't that precisely what we ask of our SROs? To step in when situations escalate, to ensure safety, and to enable students and school administrators to do their job without further disruption or danger? It is troubling to think that exercising professional judgment in a moment, in a moment of crisis, doing exactly what the position requires would be met with disciplinary consequences, let alone the potential for removal. We are left to ask important questions. Has a student been held accountable under the district code of conduct? Are SROs being undermined for doing the very job they were placed in our school to do? And what message does this send to the greater student body in our community? Beyond this incident, many, many parents and staff have expressed concern over broader issues of discipline across the district. Reports of good students being reprimanded while chronically disruptive individuals are allowed to act with impunity are growing. Incidents of students physically confronting staff, using vulgar language directed at staff members, and even engaging in behavior that threatens the environment, or the learning environment, excuse me, are alarming. In some cases, students are allegedly shielded from consequences due to fear of litigation. It has also been revealed disciplinary referrals are being combined or minimized to downplay the gravity of what is truly happening. We urge you, Superintendent Ursig, to, and this board, to take these concerns seriously. The breakdown of order and discipline, coupled with the removal of a trusted safety officer, places our school climate at much, at a much greater risk. We respect, we respectfully request that Officer Travis Winchell be reinstated and retained in his current capacity at the high school for the well-being of our students and the greater safety of our school community. The undersigned members of this community stand united in that request. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Yeah, just push it up. There you go.
Hello, everyone. The goal of a school is to impart knowledge, foster skills, and support the overall development of individuals, preparing them for future educational pursuits and careers. A school should be a place where students feel safe and are supported. A school resource officer is a sworn law enforcement officer assigned to a school to enhance safety and security. They act as both a law enforcement presence and community resource, working to build relationships with students and staff and the wider community. Officer Travis Winchell goes above and beyond in every part of his duty. He makes sure that students are safe, supported, and prepared for their futures. He personally provides students with resources that Sorbetes Central School District could never provide. Before I continue, please let me tell you a little bit about who I am. My name is Gillian Lopez. I'm a Sorbetes High School alumni, class of 2023. I am currently going into my third year of college, where I am in a four plus one program, receiving both my bachelor's and master's in technology education. I am on track to graduate with my undergrad in the spring of 2027 and with my master's in the spring of 2028. Yet, without Officer Winchell, I likely would not have graduated high school. I am a person who has always loved school and learning, but in 2020, when schools shut down due to COVID during my freshman year, I was slipping. I was really struggling with school and mental health, and I didn't know how to handle it. When we received the call after a few weeks that school would be online and we would not be returning for the year, my mom and I went to pick up my belongings and my Chromebook from the school when Officer Winchell saw me. He immediately told my mom that he was worried and that I was slipping away from school and from who I was. Officer Winchell offered for me to come and sit in the school lobby to do my work. I immediately took him up on this offer, and I began going to school to do my schoolwork. I will never forget getting home from that first day, going to see my mom in her office and watching her cry. She looked at me and told me she was crying because this is clearly everything that I needed. I continued to go to the school every day to do my work right beside him. If there was a topic I was struggling with, he would go try and find my teacher and ask, and if they weren't there, he would personally take the time to understand the topic so that he could explain it to me. All he wanted was to just help us succeed. And I wasn't the only student there. Sometimes we had upwards of 15 or 20 kids there. He kept us fully safe and socially distanced and on track to graduate. And on Fridays, he even spent his own personal money to buy us lunch for whatever we as a group wanted, to congratulate us on a week well done, and also as a reminder that people cared about us. This is just one of many examples of how Officer Winchell has gone above and beyond what his duties require of him. Since I left this school only two years ago, there have been three principals. In just four semesters, there have been three principals. This poses a significant hardship to students trying to form supportive relationships with all of this change and turnover happening in the building. Taking away such a consistent and incredible person from the students does not seem to be in the best interest of the students or the school. Officer Winchell has kept so many students on track and has been an understanding person for youth when no one else would step up to help them. I personally know he has helped students stay on track to graduate, keep them off the streets, and help them in situations that they never thought they'd see themselves in. He helps our community so much beyond the four walls of this school building. I'm going to be a teacher, teaching trades to students, showing them all of the options that this world has to offer. And without Officer Winchell, I would have never been able to walk the stage leaving this building. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, moving on on the agenda. We have Meredith here on time. Meredith Mills, last student representative report.
Okay, can you hear me? Is it?
Not yet.
Not yet. A little closer.
Takes a minute.
Yeah. No.
Still no?
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, so this is the update for the board meeting today, June 10th. In the elementary school buildings, kindergarten screenings are underway in each building. Elementary school building principals would like to thank the PTA for funding the end-of-the-year field trips that their students have been currently enjoying. The fourth grade band and chorus concert took place last week. Congratulations to all of our performers for a great show. The moving up ceremony dates for elementary schools are as followed. Morris is on June 18th, Cahill is on June 23rd, Riccardi is on June 24th. All moving up ceremonies will be in the high school auditorium. In the junior high, we are looking forward to students' presentations of learning on the 17th and 18th. I-ready diagnostics, I-ready diagnostic testing took place last week. Field days took place last week, and the moving up ceremony for the eighth graders is Friday, June 13th at 1:00 p.m. In the senior high, we would like to thank everyone who helped make this year's prom such a special and memorable evening, evening for our students. A special thanks to you, a special thank you to the junior, senior high school PTA for hosting an amazing prom, amazing post-prom. Students had a great time at the bowling alley, and they received some amazing prizes and giveaways. On Monday, June 16th at 8:00 a.m., we will begin a new tradition called Sawyer's On. We will recognize seniors who are entering the workforce, joining the military, entering a trade, participating in an apprenticeship or a college. Athletic and scholarship awards will be held on June 12th in the high school auditorium. Congratulations to all of the high school band and choir performers for a great performance. And finally, the Third Annual Science Research Symposium was held on Thursday, May 29th. The symposium featured a guest speaker who shared the research currently happening concerning microplastics in the Hudson River. The symposium also showcased work that each student put together about their science research topics. Great job to all the students that participated. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Meredith, for fulfilling the goal all year. Good luck going forward. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the board and district, we have things for you.
Okay, presentation honorees, retirees.
All right, so tonight we wanted to recognize our retirees who are leaving us at the end of the month. So in attendance tonight, I believe we have Mr. Speerig, I saw.
Mr. Speerig.
Come on down.
Thank you.
Ms. Kendall?
I'm good.
Susan Schubert?
Can someone stand up like here, please?
Ms. James? We do have several other staff who are retiring, and I do not believe that they're here tonight. If you know, Sue McKinney is our elementary project coordinator, Pam Christiana, network specialist too, Meg Lizette, elementary teacher, Mary Garland, elementary teacher, Connie Steno, our nurse, Christine Wallace, whatever teachers. Thank you, everybody, for your years of service for students.
You're still up.
Oh, I'm still up.
Okay. Thank you.
You're not gone yet.
All right, Mr. Ball, this is your last meeting.
Okay, yes, it is.
Well, we hope. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
There's still school board association awards.
All right, so, as you can see by our retirees, there's a lot of experienced institutional knowledge that's being lost, very hard to replace. So thank you to everybody for their, what they've done for our students over the years. We want to give some highlights for spring sports. So golf, we had three athletes qualify for the sections. Ty Monroe finished fifth place for section nine and 14th out of 99 golfers in New York State. So congratulations to him. Yeah, amazing. Baseball qualified for sectional play. Girls lacrosse completed in the section nine championship. Gabby Stabey scored her 100th lacrosse point. Helene Kerr was selected to the section nine lacrosse all-star team. And a big congratulations to Coach Ashley Werner, who was chosen as the coach of the year for section nine. Boys lacrosse competed in the section nine championship on a rainy day. Landon McDougal is now the all-time leading scorer for Sorbetes Lacrosse, breaking a record from 2009 held by Tony Spada. Leo Daga scored his 100th lacrosse point, and Zane Cahill reached his 500th career lacrosse save.
I don't mean to interrupt you there, but to be fair, he is the all-time leading male scorer. I believe he hasn't caught his sister. Sister is the all-time leading scorer.
Put an asterisk there. Softball completed the section nine championship. Elena Conrad achieved her 100th career strikeout. So congratulations to them. Track and field sophomore Damian Riazzi and junior Robert Peterson completed at the state qualifier meet on June 5th. Tennis, we had our doubles team make it to the state title, or state, sorry, state tournament at the Billie Jean King National Tennis Center in Queens, which was on June 6th, June 6th and 7th. So congratulations Last week, we did have some sports science, so you'll see it on social media pretty soon. I think it's coming out on Wednesday, actually. So, great season there. Other, just general highlights, as was mentioned, our band concerts. I'm always impressed by our students from grades four all the way through 12 about what they can produce. So a big thank you to our students and our staff for all that they do for them. Thank you.
You are still up.
All right. Now, we have a special guest with us tonight, Krista Carlo from Bernie Donigan's office, who is our financial advisor.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Rocko, you can pull up that presentation?
Whatever you're most comfortable with.
You just got to talk into the mics, because the people online listening to the streaming can hear you.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be in front of the board again. My name is Krista Carlo. I'm from D.C. Finance. We're the district's municipal advisors. We advise the district on capital projects, the issuance of debt, related to your capital projects. So, the objectives of this evening is to go through an overall summary of where your current debt service levels are and identify an opportunity for a potential future capital project, and run through a couple of different scenarios for you that you could consider for that future capital project. So, if you want to jump ahead to the next slide.
It's a self-serve here.
All right, well, so, we'll start off going through some basic assumptions that we look at when we evaluate a capital project. So the font is small on the screen, I apologize, but I'll try to explain through these assumptions that we, the first one, when we look at a capital project, is what is our building age ratio? So what is the state going to reimburse us for our capital projects? So what is the state going to reimburse us for our capital projects? If you're at Sawyer's, our building aid ratio is 66%. So that means for every dollar that we spend on a voter-approved capital project, the state will reimburse us 66 cents back on that dollar. So it's very important that we're mindful of that building aid and minimizing potentially the local share of the tax levy impact that any of these projects would come with by maximizing that building aid. Bond percentage is what percentage of the project qualifies for that 66% reimbursement? So we've run a couple of different scenarios for you. One at 95% and one at 75, or 70%. So that assumes in that first scenario that 95% of the project is eligible for building aid. And the second scenario assumes that the project would be 70% eligible for building aid. So it's going to give you a little bit different of a flavor in terms of what size project you can accomplish depending on what scope is chosen in the next project and how aidable the project is for, for the district. I've laid out a series of dates here in terms of when the vote potentially could be. So this revolving around a December 2027 vote. We've assumed that you'd receive SED approval in January 2029. There is a process that your architect would have to design and submit the project to the state. And then once you receive approval, that's when you can go forward and start doing that construction work that the voters approved in December of 27. First borrowing in June of, or June of 29, with the first interest payment coming due in June of 30, and the first principal on the repayment in June of 31. So again, with this being a few years out and with projects not being just a quick turnaround, there's a lot of years of planning that go into them, there's a lot of years throughout the process of a project. Interest rates, we're assuming 5% for notes, 6% for bonds. Our office had six sales today for notes and they range from 3.2 to about 3.6%. So we are building in some conservatism in terms of the rates that we're using, just not knowing what could happen in the next few years. Each of the scenarios assumes the use of 4.7 million of the capital reserve. I believe as of June 30th of last year, there was a little bit over 4.7 million in that reserve. I mean, again, to utilize those funds, those funds need to be in the account at the point in time in which the board takes action, calling for the wording of proposition and calling for that special election for the vote.
Can I ask questions?
Yes.
Okay, can I ask you just a couple of questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I think it's on. Nope, not, it's just fuzzy.
I can make that if it's.
All right, um.
Now you gotta get a mic.
Is that working?
There you go.
My name is Michelle Gomalia, welcome.
Thank you.
How does a 66% building aid rate compare to other districts in the state?
Yeah, so the range is from 10% to 98%. So it really is based on the, the property wealth of the district in comparison to other districts around the state. Those ratios can, in some situations, or some districts change on a year-to-year basis. But we have some districts that are further downstate where they're more property wealthy that are 10%. So their projects are more funded by, by the local taxes. We also have some rural districts throughout the states or some high-needs districts around the state that they receive 98% building aid back on their project. So, it ranges from 10% to 98% depending on what your, what your tax base is compared to your neighboring districts around the state.
Okay, so between those, we're kind of in the middle?
Yep.
Okay. The assumption that you have here for the 5.5% on the approved, assumed interest rate, has your firm considered the potential impacts of if the tax exempt debt legislate, legislation at the federal level?
Yep.
You know, if these, if taxes and bonds go away, obviously that impacts this?
It, it potentially could impact the rate that you'd receive on, on the bond issuance itself. The state assumed rate is, the assumption that we're using there, I'm gonna go back to slide here. The state assumed rate is the interest rate that the state reimburses our building aid at. So the state knows that, that you're paying debt service in more projects than, than not, most districts would offer their projects of the life of them. So the state will reimburse you your building aid at 66%, but they amortize it over the term of the life of the, of the repayment of that aid. So that number again changes on an annual basis depending on which year you receive SED approval. In terms of the, the bond rate that we're using, we've used 6%. So we've built in a 50 basis point cushion between what you'd be paying out in debt service and what you are getting reimbursed at from the state. So if that, you know, we continuously monitor the tax exempt kind of conversation that's happening around the country. If that were to go away, an option that might be attractive would be issuing your bonds through DASNE to get that matching rate. It's what DASNE does and we've built in the assumption for that revenue source, or for that, for that, that budget line item. Because then DASNE, if, if we're getting reimbursed from this data, let's say we're paying 7% for our bonds, they'll effectively override that reimbursement rate and reimburse us at 7%. So, if that changes the tax exempt status, there, I'm assuming that there'll be other programs that might be available, but the DASNE program might be a program that's available to, to offset that.
Okay, that was going to be my last question on this page, was what, who's the financing authority? So, it sounds like it's up in the air, but it could be DASNE.
So the financing authority is either you issue your bonds on your home through Wall Street as a public market financing, or we issue it through pooled financing through DASNE. And really, that's the decision that we make there, we just did previously for your $22 million project a couple of years ago. It really depends on what interest rates are doing and we do that, that analysis for you prior to going into any bond issuance ever, in terms of whether or not it makes more sense advantageous wise for the local share to issue the bonds on our own through Wall Street, or if we go DASNE and that pooled financing. Just to give you a little bit of context, that pooled financing this June, there's generally one every year. It was over a billion dollar transaction with, you know, almost 100 school districts around the state that took part in that financing.
And when in the year does that happen?
Uh, June.
Every year?
Yep, they used to do quarterly, but they do it just once a year now, just given the, just based on the most recent demand for, for that type of financing.
And that pooled financing comes in at the same rate for everybody?
Not necessarily. It could be, it's, it's a pooled transaction, but it's, each individual district might be put into a different series within the financing. Some of the criteria might be the, the term of your bond, the paramount of your bond, but also the credit rating that you have in terms of your underlying rating. That could factor which of the series that you get into. So there could be, potentially be some differential between our district here and another district around the state that's involved in that pool.
So does Sawyer's School District have a credit rating?
You do not have an underlying credit rating right now because your only bond that's outstanding is, is through that DASNE financing, pooled conduit financing.
So would we probably go for a credit rating?
If you go public market, if you issue over a million dollars, we would always recommend the expectation of the market is that you would be issuing a credit rated bond, so we would go for a credit rating to either Standard and Poor's or Moody's would be the typical ones that we, that we go through.
Chris, on schools that are, on districts that are similar to us with the 66%, so forget the 10% and the 98%, what is the typical capital investment project, capital project?
It's not a sizable project.
No, like every three years, every five years, what's, is the average?
The general goal that we see around the state is, is to try to do on every five years.
Five.
There's a lot of reasons for that. You know, it's, you don't want to have too much construction fatigue going on that you, that you're just constantly doing projects. But also, I have a slide in here for your maximum cost allowances.
Yep.
But in terms of the construction incidental maximum amounts that the district or that the state will reimburse your building aid at, those reset on a five-year basis. So if you can align the timing of your projects in terms of when those resets happen, it can really put you in a position to maximize the amount of building aid that you're getting back on your projects.
Okay.
That's the most questions I've ever gotten, the assumptions page.
Get ready.
Fabulous.
One or two questions at the end. They're all great questions.
You have two people with finance backgrounds, you actually have a.
Keep it coming, we, we love questions, so. Back to the assumptions that we ran for you, the two scenarios. Scenario one is that 95% scenario, so 95% aidable. Scenario two assumes that the project is 7% aidable. So you can really see how leveraging your building aid and maximizing that building aid can potentially grow the size of the project that you're able to accomplish. So, in the 95% scenario, and you'll see the, we'll go through the slides here that show how these fit into your existing local share levels and each of these project sizes do not result in any additional tax impact to the community. These fit within a drop-off that's upcoming. Next slide in the report is a look at your current debt service and your current building aid coming back in. Columns A and B are your principal and interest on your outstanding bonds, that DASNE bond that I mentioned that's outstanding. Total debt service in column C and the building aid coming back in in column D. So really, the focus on this page is that blue shaded column to the right is what is the local share or what's hitting the tax levy? And so you can see for fiscal years 26 out through fiscal year 29, it's relatively flat at around $720,000. And then you can see in fiscal year 2030 that there is a drop-off in the local share. So in terms of looking into the future, that's an opportunity. When we look at it graphically, you can see your local share, your levy for your capital component, there's a drop-off there. So from a financial advisor perspective, that's an opportunity if you have capital project needs, that now is the time to start looking at a project that might be voted on in a couple of years, in a year or two years, so that you're lining that project up with the opportunity that you have for that drop-off in the, in the local share.
And from a planning perspective, when, if we say that the, the, the drop-off is going to be in 2030, when would, we would go to vote in December of 29?
It's having to happen nicely.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Didn't even know that, good.
So the next slide in here, so with the drop-off in the 2930 year, that's really the year in which you can take on some debt service or take on, absorb some local share.
Right.
So we have the bond anticipation note in the 2930 fiscal year. That's the year in which you'd be starting to do the construction and you may be starting to a borrowing. So we would have debt service come due in the 2930 fiscal year. So backing up from there, what I said that it's not a quick process to, to get a capital project going.
Right.
There's a timeline that needs to be established in terms of voting the project, getting it fully designed by your architect, submit it to SED and getting it approved, going out to bid. So, for a drop-off in the 2930 year, a nice relaxed timeline would be voting in December 27. But you really have up until December of, of 28 would kind of be your, your kind of drop dead window, because you want to have that project voter approved prior to when you're establishing and setting up the 2930 budget. So you want to be able to build in that debt service in that year, because that's the year in which you might need to have that, that impact to that project to come on board.
Okay.
Wait, I'm getting the mic again.
Okay.
So, you're indicating, obviously, we can see the drop-off in debt service at 2030. Are there other factors that go into calculating or determining if we have debt capacity? Are there covenants or what do you primarily look at?
Yeah, so we look at, the primary place we start with is, is what is your, is what I just went over, that, that slide there, your overall existing debt service and your building aid. What is your local share? So what can you absorb without having additional impact? You also have a constitutional debt limit. Every central school district has a constitutional, constitutional debt limit. I have the number in my file here that I can give to you, I don't have it, it's not off the top of my head. But you are limited to, you know, there is a, a threshold that's the maximum that you would have in terms of outstanding debt at one point in time based on the constitutional limit.
Okay, so that's your maximum principal outstanding?
Yes.
Okay. And does that change or is it set by the school or district?
It changes on an annual basis based on your equalized values. You get a percentage of your equalized values that you, I believe it's 10% of your full equalized values of the district. And it does account for any outstanding debt that you have. But as you make principal paydowns each year, that number potentially could change. So it is a little bit of a moving target in terms of what dollars impact that threshold and kind of what that initial threshold is. So it can change on an annual basis. We do monitor that, that's part of a, the document that we do for the district every December, the continuing disclosure documents. We do a debt statement summary in that document every year.
Okay, so it sounds like what we can absorb in the budget without violating any tax cap issues or problems budget-wise and then the constitutional debt limit?
Right.
Those are the two primary things that.
Correct.
To determine debt capacity.
Yeah, and just to point out, because you mentioned tax cap, just with the local, the local share in these scenarios wouldn't have any impact on your, on your tax calculation. You just know that if you bring on a project that has debt service, there could be fluctuations in your, in your principal and interest in your annual budgets, that potentially you'd have to be mindful in terms of your budgeting for those.
Right, that's the key.
Yes.
Component, right? That, we can do it, if you have 4.5, you could do a $20 million capital project with no impacts to the tax.
Correct.
Okay.
So, you know, oftentimes if we see a district go out for impact, it's, it's kind of a, a two-pronged approach to getting the vote. The vote to get the project going first.
Right.
Or just have to approve the maximum that you're spending. But then if that project carries an impact on the, on the budgeting side, that potentially could be a situation where you might have to go out for a little bit larger of a percentage in your, in your increase in your annual budget to, to account for that. So it could be in certain scenarios.
Right.
Kind of a double, a double whammy in terms of the vote.
Okay. And just going back to the other slide before, right? The idea being, we want to try to keep that, that local share flat, right? So if, if we missed, if we did not go out for capital vote, it would drop down and then any additional thing would, would, you would feel it.
Yeah, so if, if you miss the drop-off and we get up to 31 and you're at the lower level and you try to go back up to the black line, that project carries, it carries a tax impact.
Right.
Right.
No longer fitting into a drop-off that you have, you lost the drop-off, you have to then raise the levy back up. So that project would have to calculate for you what the average increase would be to the taxpayers in the community, so you could, so they could be, know what they're voting on.
So we got important timing.
Yes, timing is the key, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So we, we kind of went over the slide, but again, this analysis assumes those dates.
Question, Michelle?
Michelle, you had a question?
Yes, real quick. How many weeks or is it how many months is SED approval time now?
So, it's definitely come back a little bit with the implementation of the third-party review. We've seen some projects go through in as little as two to three months. I mean, it depends on, on what you're doing. But that time fluctuates and so I'm just not, you know, we've, we've built in six months or seven months here from the time that you submit to when you get approval. But it could be shorter than, it could be longer than, depending on the timing that's happening at SED.
And the third party?
Yep.
That costs the district extra money.
It does, yeah.
Just one.
So that was originally implemented back a few years ago and then they took it away. It, it cleared up the, the outstanding queue at SED, but then they, they took that program away for a little while and then, I guess what happened? Got backlog.
Shocker, huh?
It's a little bit more costly than the original time, but I think if you're going to consider the third-party review, something to consider is, if you can get approval faster and get up to bid, are you having any savings in terms of escalation of costs for your, for your, for your project? So there's a lot of things to evaluate with your full, you know, architect, construction manager, our firm, to make sure that you're timing things right and going with the correct approach.
So I don't have to use third-party, but it will take longer. If I use the third-party review, it comes out of, the district has to pay for that.
Correct.
But it.
It is, it is building aid reimbursable, so you do get 66% on it, but it, but it does tap into your budget.
That taps into my budget, so I have, I have to account for it, right?
Right. Better something that Jim and his team would, would definitely be, you know, on, on the pulse in terms of what makes the most sense in terms of review times, when we get to that point in time.
Right, okay.
The next slide is a look at the 95% bond percentage in the 95% aidable scenario. So again, this page reads from left to right also. So we've got the capital reserve contribution in column B, 4.7 million. The principal payments in column C and the interest, or the interest payments in column E, your total debt service in column F. Building aid coming back in in column G and then the net local share over in column J. So that's what hits the levy. So, if you take the maturity schedule and layer it in with that blue bar chart from earlier on in the report, if you go to the far right, you can see that we're staying, building, bringing this new project on with the timing of it, we're staying flat out at that 720,000 level. So this project fits into your existing drop-off with no additional tax impact. So this is kind of the max size project with 4.7 million reserves and with the drop-off that you have available, that could be accomplished, assuming that 95% of that project is aid-eligible. So the next couple of slides are the same concept, again, the same thing here in terms of the maturity schedule focusing in on that local share over in column J. The local share stays the same. However, since it's only 70% aidable, the project size reduces to about 14.2 million. So it's really, if we're able to leverage our building aid more, that you can potentially get more of a project out of, out of your local share drop-up and out of the building aid that's going to reverse from the state. So again, 15 years of the aid payback, so the, the debt service is very much purposely structured over 15 years, because that's the repayment of the building aid in this project. This assumes a renovation project. If you were doing a, a project that's more additions than alterations, that can be over 20 years. If you were doing a brand-new build, that could be over 30 years. So we purposely structure the repayment schedule to align it with the, with the building aid. And again, this scenario, when we blend in your existing local share chart and the local share for the 14.7 million, it does keep you at the same. So it's going to look very similar to that blue and green chart, other than this project So it's going to look very similar to that blue and green chart, other than this project size is just smaller because it's less able, or getting less of that reimbursement to be able to leverage back to the state. I did include also just some appendix pages to your, your question about, uh, somebody had a question about the building aid ratios. We're currently in the build four formula, um, so 66%. Um, it can change slightly. So if you, you know, follow along that, that chart at the bottom, it, it did go up to 67.5, 67%. So there can be some slight fluctuations in it, but, um, 66% is the lowest that this district can go based on the formula.
And that's the number we should use, right? I mean, it's not going to change, there's nothing in our district that's going to change it from down to 20% or up to 85.
No, based on the formula, I mean, you might, you might tick up a couple of points here or there, but it's, it's nothing that's, we would recommend using 66% and that's what we based our analysis off of.
Okay.
It's been the most consistent over the life of that formula. Um, I mean, if you get a year where it is a little better, then that's great.
It's not material though, okay.
So the difference between scenario one and scenario two, I assume it's the underlying characteristics of the project determines if it's 95% aidable or 70% aidable?
Yep.
What, what makes something more aidable?
You guys are setting me up nice tonight.
Didn't even practice.
You guys go to dinner?
Pre meeting. So the, the primary factor is your maximum cost allowances. So for each student occupied building in New York State, the state sets a, a rate of capacity effectively for the amount of dollars that delegate us back at each of our buildings for both construction and incidental work. So for example, under column A, under the Riccardi School, your base maximum cost allowance for your construction of this building, so work done within the building is 8.9 million. That means we can spend $15 million on a capital project at, at Riccardi, but the state's only going to reimburse us for that up to $8.9 million. So anything above and beyond that threshold is non-aidable. And so that's one of the factors that leads into what percentage of the project is aid eligible? How much can we leverage our projects with the building aid we're getting back? We do need to be mindful that the state does what's called a five-year look back on all of our buildings. So you can see we've listed all of your projects that received approval over the last five years and also when those projects reset. So those projects fall out five years after you receive SED approval. So it's kind of like a revolving aid ceiling calculation that as we reach the, the reset dates, those will fall off. The other thing to be mindful is the bottom half of the page is incidentals. Incidental costs are architect fees, construction manager fees, fees for financing, bond counsel attorneys. But unfortunately, that also includes site work. So anything that's five feet or further outside of the building, any parking lots, uh, fields, tennis courts, sidewalks, all of that work unfortunately needs to be reported under those buckets down below. And those are either 20 or 25% of the, of base values depending on the grade levels that are in those buildings. So for Riccardi, our base, uh, incidental aid ceiling is 1.7 million or 1.8 million. So again, if we spend $5 million in incidental costs there, the state's only going to reimburse us our 66% up to the 1.8 million. The, the analysis in the page here is, is a look at your aid ceilings as of today. However, you know, we go back to the previous, one of the previous slides, the timeline of when you're going to vote, I did also want to include what if we get approval from the state after November 29th, 2027? So that's not a random date. That's when your 22 million project, $22 million capital project falls off. So you're going to get a lot of your aid ceilings back to work with. So.
And that number, I'm sorry, that number, that 1.8, so like we were talking before the meeting, that's, that's what we would need to take into account when we start talking about that easement and the, the new roadway in.
Yeah, so I was going to mention that, right? So we had asked to go the wide range of 70% aidable because we anticipate spending a lot of money on site work for the, the egress
Right.
going in and out of Riccardi.
Okay.
So I mean, you have healthy aid ceilings for construction across the board. Um, you know, even at the high school, a healthy incidental aid ceiling, just by the nature of the formula and the way that the building aid works and the amount of, uh, capacity you have it. At Riccardi, it's just a smaller base number to work with. So something you always have to be mindful when you're looking at a project. So, you know, the 95% scenario, you know, you're perfectly placing those construction costs in those buckets. But again, if you have work that needs to be done and it's a priority and you go over one of those aid ceilings, then that's when you maybe tick back into like the 70% scenario, you know. So that's why we wanted to run those couple of different models for you to see. So you have a little bit of a range of what an aidable project accomplishes compared to unloved, less aidable project.
Are there like major categories of things that we think are going to go into this financing? I hear you're talking about an easement for Riccardi School. Are there other major things we know we need to fit into this?
So for that, we would look at our building condition study through the facilities plan and identify what elements we want to need to get done and if there's any, you know, wish list items as well.
Okay.
There's a lot of need.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
That's, I happy this evening. Um, my questions, if there are any additional questions?
Sorry, we didn't have any questions for you. Rolled right through.
Appreciate that.
No, no, this was
Yeah, we certainly appreciate it. I mean, I can speak for myself and the other advisors in our office. It's, it's nice to have that, an engaging conversation regarding this.
One question that might be interesting to hear is how does like phases factor into this, right? So instead of doing one project all at once, if we were to, just for argument's sake, right, do the Riccardi Road first and then the next school year, let me do the other one, how?
Yeah, so this analysis, back to the, the timeline, it assumes everything's done in, in one phase. But what would happen in a, in a phased era, it's very common, you know, as project sizes have grown around the state, more projects than not are phased. So what we would do is we would work very closely with your architect, your construction manager, develop a, a cash flow. And we'd want to make sure that they were separating out project numbers. Um, if you had like two, if you had a couple summers of work you wanted with the high school, maybe a good approach to that is that you do two separate submissions to SED. So we can start get building aid flowing on that first phase. And we line the financings up to align with how the building aid's going back in. So a cash, a monthly cash flow from your construction manager is critical to our structuring and borrowings. Uh, but if it's a phased approach, these models work the same. It just, the, the, everything just slides out for each of the phases.
But we could all, but we could go, we could do a phased approach, but only go with one vote.
Correct.
So it doesn't seem like we're always going back to the one.
Right.
So we could phase it out so that we hit those debt, the thing where the debt is rolling off, but only go to the public once.
Correct. Yeah, if you go to the public once, it establishes your maximum automatic expenditure. And then, you know, if there's different models, maybe run up a two-phase, three-phase approach. Where it makes the most sense, we can run all those models and just confirm that they fit, but this, it, those will work in those scenarios and this is typically how we run these numbers with a single phase because that's the most conservative. And then if things stretch out with a phased approach, we can certainly adapt the financial plan as we go.
Okay, so we avoid voter fatigue of like, wow, you guys keep coming back on the project, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And to your point about the phased approach, that might be, you know, if you're in a situation where you're up against those maximum cost allowances, maybe you could get some project numbers into the state and then as some of those resets happen, if there was work at specific buildings that you needed to open up more aid ceiling at, that could be a, a, a situation which you could use a phased approach as well too.
Got it.
I think it's also just good to know too that Chris or one of his colleagues is always at a facilities meeting, kind of listening to what the conversation is and providing financial advice along the way.
Yeah.
It's helpful for us to be at those meetings.
Oh, it's very helpful, having you there.
How often are they?
Every month.
Every month.
First Wednesday of the month.
Yep.
The one other thing I just didn't want to mention, um, and that I'll, we all said is if the timing does not work for you, I know we've talked about it when we met at the facilities meeting, that you do have a debt service fund available. So if, if waiting for that vote in December of 27 is too far out and you wanted to accelerate it, you do have some debt service fund that you could use in fiscal year 29 to bring that drop off a year sooner. So if timing does not work with this model, you do have some options and some flexibility to work with to, to change when that timing is to bring it up a little bit sooner. And we could find option three to push it out, but bringing it forward actually works a little bit easier just with the funds you have available in your debt service fund.
All right. Thank, anybody have any other questions for Chris? Thank you. Extremely helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anybody who has any questions, just let us know. Happy to, happy to get back to you.
Okay. Done. Board member remarks. Start on this side of the table. Anything?
Nothing.
Ms. Bella Rosa? That one works. Hit and miss.
Yes. Yes, it's working.
Thank you.
Going to get right up next.
Got to get a little closer.
Am I, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
I think I hear you out there, yeah.
Uh, just quickly, I just wanted to, um, given that it is Bill's last meeting, I did want to thank him for his service for the last three years. I know for me personally, just having his perspective, uh, as an educator and, um, a lifelong community member in the Sargades School District, um, I think his perspective has been very helpful, um, at least for me. So I want to thank him for his, uh, three years of service. Also, I believe this is Michelle's last possibly meeting as our interim business official. And I do want to thank you for the kind of stability that you've given the business office for the past year. I think it's been very helpful. Uh, so I do want to thank you for, um, your year here as well, or almost here. Um, and then just lastly, uh, summer break is almost coming up, so I want to wish all the teachers and students a safe and enjoyable summer. Thank you.
Is he in?
Oh, no, I'll write him.
You want to go next?
No, no, no.
Just tell him. I know.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I would just like to say congratulations to all of those that are retiring, um, this evening. We wish you well. I know you're going to love retirement. It's wonderful. For your years of dedication to the school district. Um, you know, you've touched the lives of so many people, so many of our students, and so we're grateful for that. Um, and I'd also like to echo what, uh, Ms. Bella Rosa said. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
For your service to the Board of Education. Um, and also thank you, Michelle, for your service as well. Thank you. I think, I think that's it.
Well, Phil, really just only the second meeting since I've been sworn in, since we've been together, but I do wish that all the Sargades perspective and I'll see you around town. Um, I just want to reiterate my commitment publicly to, um, to the public and to enhancing communication transparency. That's something that's going to be a big focus for me on this board. Um, I think we can all benefit from that, even if it takes us out of our comfort zone. And so you guys are important.
Well, I guess I'll start right with Bill.
Thank you.
Mr. Ball, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure sitting next to you. I've, uh, had plenty of conversations with you and, uh, learned a lot, honestly, from you, and I do appreciate that. Uh, Michelle, thank you for your, your past year as well. Um, you, you know, similar to what Christina said, you've definitely stabilized and kind of helped us see a lot of things in a better light and kind of see where, where we're headed. And it's been very helpful for the board because sometimes there's a lot of gray area in there and for us, it's hard to kind of decipher all that. And you've been very open and kind of helping us kind of see our way through that. So we appreciate that very much. And as far as the, uh, the retirees, congratulations. I know there are three here tonight. Um, I wish you the best and, and for all of you. And then congratulations to all the sports. I mean, it seems like we had a pretty phenomenal, uh, spring sports season. And it's, it's pretty cool to see some of these, uh, you know, tie, you know, ending up 14th in the state and actually being recognized coach of the year. Uh, and then just the recognition throughout the, the boys and girls across softball, tennis. It's, it was a pretty awesome, uh, spring season. So I'm glad to hear that. That's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you. These might be, uh, the, the most brief remarks I've had since I've been on the board. So, and they say you only, you know, you only get applause when you finish. So I, I'd like to thank Meredith, her, her last meeting as well, but the amount of information that she shares in that report about, you know, what's going on and, and what's happening with our youth, um, the, the sports, uh, achievements that, pardon me, that Mr. Wells mentions. It, it's tremendous and it, and it really is, it's a tremendous, uh, school district. And I think, you know, every meeting we hear, um, uh, more and more ways that it's continuing to, uh, to flourish. So thank you, um, for that. Congratulations to all of the students that are moving up and the students that are graduating. This is an exciting part of the year, obviously, a lot of things that are going on. Uh, I do typically remind people that there are also, uh, months that we need to be exceptionally mindful of safety, um, for our youth. Uh, these are really challenging months, uh, for high school students. Um, and we want everybody to, to arrive safely, uh, wherever they're going. So I wish all of our students a, a fantastic end to the year and a safe end, um, to the school year. When I decided to run for the board, really, it was just to give back to the school district that, uh, had done so much for, uh, myself. You know, our family, we have five children, uh, that have done very well. For me, the biggest thing that I wanted to try to do is, and again, I'm joking, but I wanted to make sure that the business that I was at least conducting and sharing and commentary and things like that, uh, was always going to be very public. So I haven't shied away, uh, from speaking at, at board meetings. And I think that, uh, I think that, you know, that's, that's an important, an important part of, of being on the board is at least making sure that people can hear, uh, you know, what, what your, uh, what your thoughts are and how you're choosing to engage and, and participate. So I hope I've, I satisfied that end. And again, I tried to bring some of my experience, you know, the years, you know, that I've borne in public education, minimally as well as, as other areas. So I hope that, that, uh, that has helped. I'm a one-termer. I realize that. And yet it's amazing how long the three years have been. Not necessarily just by virtue of this work, right? But, you know, lots, a lot happens. A lot happens in three years. Um, and I won't tick off all those things, but I'm looking forward to, um, Sargades continuing to grow. I'm looking forward to this board, uh, this exciting board, uh, and the board that's going to be in place July 1st, continuing to maintain the, the 30, 40,000-foot view that they need to maintain, we need to maintain, right? To make sure that our team, Dr. Ursig, his administrative team, um, have the best, best opportunity to do what they do best. And that is, uh, work to educate our children. Um, so thank you to my board colleagues. Thank you to the administrative team. Thank you to all of our teachers, TAs, uh, uh, teaching assistants, aides. All of, all of our CSEA folks, right? Everybody that I can't even, you know, think of, our custodial staff, our, our cafeteria, uh, staff, everything. Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
Justin, hi, hey. Um, thank you, Bill Wall. I voted for you when you ran. And, um, I am so glad to have been able to serve, uh, one year with you. And I really appreciate the comments about talking at the board meeting. Um, I think it's something that we've been able to do more of and I'm really glad of that. And sort of in the spirit of transparency and to just sort of echo what, uh, Michelle said, um, you know, I know it can be frustrating to come here and just feel like you've said something and that we're not engaged in conversation. But I also am really, uh, grateful for Jeffrey's leadership to sort of keep this space open and responsive space because we do hear what people say and bring to the table. And we would love to have a full room every month. Not because you're unhappy with us, but because you're engaged and want to know what's, uh, going on. And I want to congratulate, I think Jillian has left, uh, but I really want to congratulate her on both her high school graduation and the things she's looking forward to in '27 and '28. And I'm just really glad to hear that she received what she needed from this school regardless of who supplied it. Um, and to remind all of us that keeping company is so critical for getting our work done. Sometimes it's not, uh, you know, some fancy intervention or something expensive. It's just, uh, a greeting to say, hey, I'll be with you. It's certainly what got me through my school. I had a teacher who, uh, somebody said, who's your favorite teacher? He would certainly be it. And he was like, I will sit with you after school while you do your work. I've got plenty of work to do and I'll just keep you company. So I think that that's sort of a powerful lesson because even in these times when money is tight and, um, you know, we're trying to think about how to do, be the best stewards we can of the money and the vote and the confidence that we are provided. That to remember those things are things that really, really matter. So I just want to thank the 1,700 voters about who voted. Um, would love to see that number bigger. I thank, of course, the people who voted yes for the budget and I also thank the people who voted no for the budget for voting. And I invite them to come to the board meetings and to find out how we're spending the money, what we're doing, what kind of impact we're making on kids, teachers, um, and, you know, how we are lighting the community really. So thank you, all the retirees and everybody. I am sorry I will not be at the graduation this year. I had to travel for work and, uh, but I think it's a great thing and I encourage everybody to go because it is so joyous and it is the best view in the Hudson Valley. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, I'll be, I'll be brief. Um, so first off to the retirees, um, congratulations on everything. You know, Mr. Spirit was, uh, influential in my son Damien actually getting, taking up an instrument and him falling in love with music. So, um, to be able to see him do his last band concert last week was phenomenal. Meg Lizette, um, I, I know personally and have known for years and has done some exceptional things for my kids. So seeing her go is, uh, is bittersweet. Um, and then Ms. Kendall, thank you. Besides, my, my last remembrance of Ms. Kendall will be last week, um, at the state qualifiers in 95-degree heat, trying to, uh, get, uh, Mr. Peter Smith, Robert, ready for hurdles and, uh, keeping Damien, um, on track, um, in, in the shade. So thank you. So thank you. From Michelle, thank you. You definitely filled a void that we didn't anticipate coming on. And you being here and your experience has been instrumental, especially through a very difficult kind of budget season and things last year and coming out of last year. So thank you for everything. And then Meredith, you definitely elevated and you set, I always look at how somebody does is, did you leave it better than when you found it? And I think people thought that, think, people think of the student rep as, you know, a student is going to sit at the table and just listen. And the information you provide has been exceptional, so thank you. And we're ahead of the game on that. You know, there's things, you know, the state just came out with something that is mandating that every, every school district now has a student rep on the board. And we've had one. So I like that Meredith is setting, trend-setting, so thank you and good luck. Real quick with Mr. Ball. We go back to alumni at Mount Marion together. So I go back further than anybody else with Mr. Ball. And he is actually, he's sitting in Sue's one night. He's the reason I ran for the board. He convinced me to run for the school board two years ago. So his, using his 30 years of experience as a sounding board has been invaluable. So good luck and enjoy the grandkids.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
So while, the last thing I want to say is it's, this is our last meeting of our school year. But you don't, we're not taking the next two months off. There's a couple of big things that we need people to pay attention to. One is the cell phone policy. I'm going to call it the cell phone policy. It's an electronic policy. But we are mandated by the state to have it implemented by August 1st. So thank you to the state for only allowing us one meeting after your budget passes. But it has to be in place by August 1st. So feedback on that, you're going to see an item on the agenda tonight around it. And even while we're, you know, the July meeting, it's going to be important, the policy meeting and the board meeting, on kind of finalizing the wording and how that fits into our code of conduct. And, you know, I, people want to talk about transparency. I think we've done a good job of increasing the transparency. Is it where it needs to be? No, we can always improve it. But I put some of the transparency on things like this out to our parents and our community. The time for feedback on the electronic policy is not August 2nd. It's over the next two months. If you, if you have stuff to say, we want to hear it. Don't come on August 2nd and go, this is ridiculous. Why'd you do this? It's out there, and it will be published consistently over the next 60 days. So get your feedback in. And that way, the policy committee can craft something that can come to the board, and we can approve something that people buy in. Is it, I'm going to tell everybody, is it going to be perfect? No. Is it going to be a work in progress that through our policy meeting and through feedback coming in and through experiences that our staff sees on day-to-day, comes September, and we have to change things? Absolutely. But with feedback from teachers and from parents, I would like to get something in place on August 1st that has a solid foundation and only has to be massaged a little bit and not completely changed, okay? There's a couple of other things that you're going to hear over the next, you're going to hear one on the board discussion tonight, but that are going to be big and that we need people to pay attention to. And that's our enrollment and our instruction model. And what do I talk about instruction model? Instead of, as we talk about transparency, that is getting sixth grade up here to the main campus. Is it going to happen in September? No. So let's, I'll go on record, so anybody listening in or anybody who wants to go on social media and distort what I just said, it's not going to happen in September of '25, and it's not a redistricting. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about what almost every other district is going to, of creating a true secondary campus where we have elementary that is kindergarten through five, and our sixth graders are up here in a sixth-through-eighth model, okay? I went longer than I thought, so I apologize, but thank you. Oh, I got, I'm still up. No, I'm not. Phew, thank you. Dr. Rohrbach on our creating the Sawyer Experience.
Okay. Wow, there's still people here. Normally, by the time Momma, nobody's left. So this is super exciting. I'm so thrilled to share this collaborative work tonight. Talk about transcending. Sawardies is trend-setting in many ways. In Elster County, we are gaining a reputation of being a powerhouse team, administratives, principals, with student-driven work, student-driven voice. Tonight is about the qualitative story. The next time I present, the data will be finished. Right now, 80% of our students have finished the iReady diagnostic, so I'd like to wait, and then I will show that. As we're going through our story, I think it's really important that we remember before the data changes, the research will say it takes five years with intense classroom instructional support before the quantitative data changes. We are on our way. Practice is changing, and it's super exciting. I guess I need this. So this is our story of engagement equity and empowerment. Much of what I'm going to share today, Dr. Ursig and I shared at the Niskus New York State School Council of Superintendents Cabinet Summit. We are also going to share this at the Deeper Learning Conference, which has become a Northeast conference in partnership with Elster Bosse's. So it always begins with a vision of learning. For the past three years, our vision of learning has been the three E's. This year, we began to lean into the Sawyer Experience. You all have access to this slide deck, and there's probably over 40 hyperlinks, so have fun reading if you want to. But it's driven by these questions. When it comes to engagement, a lot of people think we really understand what engagement is. But one of the pieces of our story this year is really getting clarity about what it is. And not just are the students engaged, but also are the adults engaged? So I'm going to ask Ginger, can you help me pass these out? Thank you. And equity is the instruction curriculum environment equitable for all? And empowerment, how are we empowering others? Okay. So in terms of investments, what are we invested with in terms of our values, our time, and financially investments? There's a long list here, and how do we choose? This is driven by data. It's driven by feedback from the teachers. We give them surveys after every single superintendent's conference day. I personally ask folks. We also are constantly checking in with our administrative staff. The other investments that, the other way in which we decide, other than feedback and data, is need. And also, what is SED requiring of us? So you can see that professional learning for all the adults is important. The blueprint has been priority this year. Standards-based instruction. I just want to lean into this for two minutes. As a district, we need to focus on the science of reading, and we need to focus on science. Today was the new regions for living environment. It was the toughest regions I've seen in a long time. It wasn't just a science regions. It was a literacy regions. And it used to be, if you could memorize the vocabulary and do your homework and do your labs, you would do pretty well on the regions. But it's not how it is anymore. There are all new standards, and it's a process that's steeped in phenomenon-based learning. We are super fortunate to have Chelsea Dafino in the district, who is partnering with me in all of the PBL. Special education has been a huge investment this year in terms of partnering with Dr. Kappeler and Ms. Churchill. That's probably one of my proudest moments this year is our collaborative work with the TSG being a targeted school district and creating some momentum for, with the writing revolution, academic vocabulary. The way we ended the year with special education teachers sharing out what they did throughout the year was super celebratory. So thank you for that. We're continuing with restorative practices and TSS, designing classrooms that promote mental health. And the list goes on. We're continuing with PBL and the planned pilot. This is the science of reading. This slide I presented in January. It's there as a healthy reminder. This is a healthy reminder of where we were in 2021 to where we are today. 2021, I would not have been able to live in Sawardies because my child required a reading specialist. And in 2021, we didn't have any. Today, we have a reading specialist in every single elementary building. We still need to continue to be vigilant about screening early. We are still missing students. We need to stay vigilant about what types of assessments we are doing that are aligning to the science of reading. That's our work in front of us this summer. That's not a choice. That's a need. So from 2021 to 2024, again, I shared this in January. You can see the tremendous amount of collaborative work that the teachers have done. Everything from no curriculum maps, no pacing guides, to now we have a robust system. Our professional philosophy of literacy and our DEI statement, I'm pretty confident that's what got us the planned pilot out of 23 schools. Okay. So we have all those achievements, and Dr. Ursig has shared those achievements going back in the slide. And this is amazing. And it's really important to celebrate all of our achievements. But I think it's also really important for us to stay vigilant that according to the most recent Gallup poll, maybe it wasn't the most recent, but this year, stating that Gen Z is disengaged. They are not engaged in school. They're bored, and they're not challenged. And according to this Gallup poll, it's stating that they are not challenged when they come to school. According to Amy Berry, who is a researcher who wrote the book that stemmed into this engagement continuum, she, in her research, she'll state that 47%, only 47% of students are engaged in school. So this is part of our investment. Are we engaging our students? Are we engaging our adults? So how are we going to do this? So one of the things that I learned while I was working at Elster Bosse's and given a job I really hated, God, it was awful, is getting super clear. I'm a creative, I'm a big-picture person. And one of the jobs I was given was, you're going to do assessments for the entire county. And I turned white, and I did it for three years. And I think actually, I might have met Bill Wall around that time, too. And what I learned for working with 26,000 teachers in the county is you need to set goals so that everybody can rattle them off. So this was during the era of common scoring. And we would say, we're going to score these tests in a calm, accurate, and consistent manner. And most of the teachers can still rattle that off. So we had to get clear about our goals and our language so that we could do the blueprint for excellence. And those are our four pillars underneath. And I'm happy to report out that last week, we finalized our portrait of a graduate. This process was not decided by Dr. Ursig or I. It was a process of revision, an iterative process. I think like four revisions.
Yeah.
And this is where we landed, and it's super exciting. Globally aware and culturally competent, literate across the content areas, critical thinkers and problem solvers, effective communicators, empathic and socially responsible citizens, ethical leaders and community contributors, resilient and adaptable. So this is what our graduates are going to be. And then what was really cool on June 3rd was we had a community circle, and Dr. Ursig asked each of us, are we going to be committed to this, and can we stand behind this? Another proud moment this year was creating the three E's micro credential. So we are providing an opportunity for our teachers to earn 35 in-service credits. That's a lot. And Chelsea, myself, and Dr. Jen are leading series in the engagement. I do the engagement, Chelsea does the equity, grading for equity, and Dr. Jen does the writing revolution. You're already tired of hearing from me. So in a few minutes, you're going to hear from a teacher about her experience with that. So it's really pivotal that if you're going to build a culture of celebrating learning, moving the needle, having students be part of the learning and present, that it begins with leadership. And our team here is phenomenal. So you like that picture, Ginger? So it always begins with training up and empowering our admin. We finalized Portrait of a Graduate. This picture right here is us working on it as an admin team back in the summer. That's where you begin. And then they began working on it. We also began working on the engagement continuum with our administrators. So let's just take a look at this. You have this in front of you. This comes from Amy Berry's word, from disrupting to driving. And this goes back to my point earlier. Everybody thinks they know what engagement is. And I would challenge your thinking to think about, most people think, oh, if a child's engaged, they're quiet, they're listening to the teacher, they're probably answering a few questions, right? Well, Amy Berry's going to challenge your thinking. We want our Sawyers to be invested in their learning. We want them asking questions, presenting their learning. We want our students to be driving their learning. Are they asking for feedback from their peers? Are they asking for feedback from their teachers? Are they asking for feedback from community experts and partners in Sawardies and beyond? So this came about from a pilot our instructional coach did with a teacher. I'm not even sure what teacher it was because that's confidential. She said, Dr. G, can I please pilot this? I said, go for it. She said, this is really working. So I took it. I turnkeyed it with the principals. Principals did it on opening day. And basically, that's been our pattern for the past four years. And then they turnkey some things as well. And we share our professional learning together. So one of our commitments as an admin team is having common agendas, flipping the faculty meetings from an email, not just stand and deliver and going down the bullets like, keep your door locked, da-da-da-da, regions are coming up, active proctoring, get up, walk around. And yes, there are some business things you need to say, but also there should be a little slice of learning as well. And I'm really proud of the work the principals have done. One of the key things I learned this year with being a TSG school, and Rory Grivens taught me this, and it was like, oh, my goodness, this is so obvious. Why haven't I done this my whole life? Tell teachers what you're expecting them. Like, don't make any surprises. Their day is so, sometimes so crazy and so busy. Just let them know. So that's what we've been doing. On day one, the principals stood in front, and we all said the same thing. Here's what you can expect. You can expect us to be in your classrooms this year. We're going to do learning walks. You can expect that we're, I'm going to introduce the engagement continuum. That we're going to work on the blueprint and so forth. So the principals, in addition to common agendas, and this wouldn't have happened five years ago, four years ago, the principals are now facilitating data workshops on the New York State data, three through eight. We're in our second year of that. And we're also, they're also facilitating analysis of student work. This has been super exciting. It's really important horizontally. We have the teachers together in the district so that they can look at student work. And it's really important to have a vertical perspective of looking at student data. Our learning walks, we've done many of them. You heard Ms. Churchill talk about doing some for TSG. Ms. Vale led the charge courageously immediately in September with an engagement learning walk and IDE was our partner with that. And then we also did one with fourth grade. Correct? The other thing I learned from being cited in a TSG is if you're gonna do learning walks, immediately give the teacher some piece of feedback. Don't leave them wondering. It induces anxiety. It's not worth it. So we immediately left a post-it of what we saw and how it aligned to the district goals. All right, so teacher practice. So we talked about the leadership practice. Now we're gonna talk about the teacher practice in our story. So my husband always reminds me that people are never gonna like me. He's a teacher. It's like, gee, nobody ever likes the assistant or deputy assistant, whatever your title is, we don't like you. You come in, you stay for a few years, you make us do all this work. Superintendents' conference days are awful. And the reason why they're awful is they're not thoughtfully set up. So we have worked as a team to really dismantle them. And now what happens is I will send my husband pictures of all the incredible things sorbities is doing and he's incredibly jealous. And so we've worked really hard at training and empowering our teachers. And the reason why is it is our dream to have through Restorative Practices, through the Engagement Continuum and through the Writing Revolution, a K through twelve common language. The more we have a common language, the students and teachers, the more folks really understand what we're doing. Three years ago, I thought, gosh, it would be really cool. And I said this to Steve Stellavato in a NEA lead teacher, if we could do some form of K through twelve writing gallery walk. So this May, we did it. Some of my colleagues thought I was crazy. And K through six did a really incredible job. So kudos to the K through six teachers. Beautiful picture of Mrs. McCaig. Do you wanna share why you're smiling? Surprise, you're on camera. Can I share what you said to me?
Maybe.
That it was a former student? Just it was this beautiful moment I captured of Mrs. McCaig who's teaching kindergarten, looking at sixth grade work. So and to see her student now in the sixth grade, it was such a salient moment for her. So just to spelling some myths about engagement, a lot of folks think engagement is school, being compliant, and we're really leaning into investing in driving. That's on the right. And it's really about the process of learning, not what. So here's something before I turn it over to a teacher to share her story is, so this was an invitation with the continuum, like, hey, this might help you. It was not an edict. It wasn't a mandate. And then by December, as I was walking around the district, I'm noticing teachers have made it their own. See the colors on the continuum and see them in the classroom now? This one was pretty cool. So this is a first grade classroom and this teacher is still experimenting with it. These six-year-olds come in the classroom and then they place where their goal is for the day and they move it around. And in first grade, if a student gets to driving, you know what they do for each other? They give each other a round of applause. So what does driving look like for a six-year-old? It might be a really high-level question. These are more. And then full circle in May, here is a teacher who took, is taking all three micro credentials and she is leading a professional development learning slice. And this was a really big deal for her. She had never done this. She was nervous and we were super proud of her for doing it. In our TSG session, we had over ten roundtables of special ed teachers teaching other teachers. So on May 20th, we had over seventy sessions and forty led by our own Sawyer teachers. It's a lot. And God bless Jennifer Fellows because Frontline decided to do an update and of course, seventy sessions listing them. She got it done. It was amazing. And we did a beautiful job. Here are just some of them. I'm not gonna read them to you. But I was so impressed with the thoughtfulness our teachers put in to the subjects that they wanted to present. Everything from The Anxious Generation by John Height, which I highly recommend, to reading philosophies, all of it. So enough with me talking. I'm gonna turn it over to one of our teachers who's gonna share her experience.
Good evening. My name is Hope Craft. I'm the reading specialist at Rocconey Elementary School. And I have gone through the micro credentials from the sorbity school district. I am here tonight to discuss my journey through the professional development that the sorbity central school district has provided. First off, I would like to start off with this slide. So I was observed in the beginning of the year and I scored a little bit lower in one component because my students did not have a goal. So I took the continuum and then I created a slot for the goal so that my students were able to put a goal in and how they're gonna use their skills from my class out in their classroom and in the real world. So this student over here said that I will use sound tapping to read big words in the classroom and at home. So we do teach sound tapping. I teach the Wilson program. So we do a lot with sound tapping. So each one of my students has this goal card in my classroom on the wall. And so they have their goal. We discuss their goals. Then they also have a star. So for the day, they determine where they were for the day. So investing is pretty good in my class because I guide the instruction with the curriculum that I have to provide for them. So they are very good about helping one another and providing information and feedback to one another and asking questions. Driving's a little bit harder for them in the situation that I'm in and teaching. But overall, they do a really good job and it really gets them focused and involved in what they're doing.
And what grades do you do? Do you do that for?
So I'm doing that second through sixth grade currently. I do see a first grade, or no, sorry, kindergarten for MTSX also. So I take a couple of the Wilson ideas and apply it to the kindergartner. But for the most part, Wilson is geared for second to twelfth grade and adults also. So these were the reading materials that we had for the micro credentials. And the first one I would like, or the next one I would like to discuss is, which is not on here, the curriculum mapping. For the past, I would say, three years, I have been involved with curriculum mapping. And for me, this is my roadmap to education. It establishes the learning objectives and goals needed to be taught. It organizes content and skills in a specific order. It allows me to select appropriate instructional methods, materials and resources to guide my instruction for students. It guides me with assessments and how to gauge students' progress. It creates consistency across classrooms, grade levels and schools, which also align with the standards. The first class I was involved with was the Writing Revolution, which was wonderful. My takeaways from this course was how to teach students specifically how to write using a single paragraph outline, a multiple paragraph outline. And it actively outlines it for the students and you teach them how to create a paragraph, how to create a multi-paragraph essay. Also, writing a topic sentence, a concluding sentence, and how to summarize. The summarization is what really connects to Wilson because in my lesson, block three, students read a passage and they have to retell the story. So what we do is teach them to make a movie picture and then retell or summarize what they read, which is very important. A little bit about the Wilson reading system. It's an explicit systematic approach to teaching reading and spelling, specifically designed for individuals who struggle with language-based learning difficulties such as dyslexia. It focuses on reading words accurately, spelling words correctly, reading with speed and expression and understanding what is read. And that's where that comprehension or summarizing comes in, which is part of the Writing Revolution. The Wilson system is an amazing program. I did the training last year. Again, the district provided that training for me. It was very intense. It took a full year and you had to have a practicum student. So this year, I administered a baseline assessment, which was the WADE in the beginning of the year. And right now, I'm wrapping up the WADEs. I think I have five more students that I need to finish up testing. So far, every student has shown growth. And that growth is demonstrated from steps one through twelve. So the Wilson program is step one through twelve. And when doing the assessments for growth, that's what we look at. How far they have grown within the twelve steps, even though we have not reached the twelve steps. I think my most advanced group is at step five, five point something. So we're not near step twelve, but they still show that great amount of growth. The other thing we test is the mastery, which is interesting to see who mastered the skills. And then I'm able to go back and focus on the skills if a student did not make mastery in those areas. And then, which brings us to grading for equality, which Mrs. Stefino taught. It was a wonderful class. I really enjoyed that one also. My takeaway from this class was grades should solely reflect academic mastery, not behavior or external factors. Because we really wanna assess what the student knows. They don't write their name on their paper. We don't wanna take ten points off. It's really looking at what the student knows. So I would like to thank the district for providing these wonderful opportunities for professional development. All of them are used within my groups. And I can take pieces, but it really impacts the students and makes a difference in a positive way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for great overview.
Thank you, Hope, for being great. This is practice. One of the teachers, when I need really honest feedback about what's going on, I go to her. Tell her what's going on. I get it direct, concise, and it's super helpful. Okay, so we've talked about the leadership practices. We've talked about the teacher practices. Most importantly, now, as we're wrapping up, in two minutes, here are the student outcomes. That was one of my favorite ones. There we go. In November, we had a panel of students talk about equity. Enough with adults and experts talking about equity, but let's ask the tough questions to our students. They have opinions and voices. And they know what it is. We need to provide the opportunity for them to share. And we spent quite a bit of time thinking about who would facilitate it. And the best person to facilitate it was Dr. Ursig. He's known many of them since they were very young. And he's a very powerful speaker. Project-based learning. And Stefino and I launched this in the high school and seventh and eighth grade three years ago. And then with the planned pilot, it's just gaining more and more momentum. We need to continue to do this. It's not that we're asking teachers to do this every single day, but project-based learning with authentic alternate assessments provides an opportunity for students to share with their learning and ask for feedback and revise their learning. And there, some of the board members are providing feedback in real time. We need to continue doing our science research, which is our twelve-credit course, research course, partnered with the University of Albany. Becky Lee here is giving, sharing her research that she did, which was better research than folks in some of my dissertation cohort at Manhattan. It's truly amazing. The structure in which they do the science research is very, very similar to writing a dissertation. They will be well prepared.
There's an IRB process for that too. We have internally.
There is an IRB process. I didn't tell a particular student. No. So Dr. Ursig, they came back. You're not allowed to do, just like in any IRB, you're not allowed to release any human being, any students, any human being. It's to protect human rights. More success parade is coming up, but if you notice on the left top side is our beautiful pictures of our students, of what they're proud of. And then the following year, the teachers joined in of what they are proud of. So I'm looking forward to that. Teachers inviting other teachers. This is huge. That, this is the culture we're trying to create. So this was a very proud moment. Presentations of learning are happening in the junior high school on the seventeenth and fifteenth. And I'm looking forward to this. It was launched with Mrs. Vale and Mrs. Stefino. And not just the students are sharing their presentations, but also the teachers. And in one of your packets is the rubric that they used last year. I don't know if they're using it this year. The data chats, this first grade looking at their own iReady data. These are student outcomes. So giving our students opportunities to have these conversations. They will rise up and they will have them. So as we're coming to closure here, we're gonna tie together how I invited this classroom, these two teachers to come and speak tonight. They couldn't come, but I have permission to show this very quick two-minute video. I gave you a peer rubric. And the teacher explicitly taught the students how to give feedback. And what you're going to see is an eight-year-old giving another eight-year-old feedback about the Writing Revolution. Okay, we're good.
Can you rewind?
That's our first classroom. So as we're wrapping up tonight, um, you know, really, thanks, Rocco. What's next, like I opened with, is yes, we need to focus on the science of reading, share that. Yes, we need to focus on all of these things right here. But in summary, our students, we've learned from the learning walks, are very participant. We need for some of these to move into investing and driving because they are capable. As you just saw, when students are given the opportunity, they will rise. So thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate your support. I know I took a long time.
It's a year's worth of learning. It's okay.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely. You can ask anything you want.
So I, and I've heard how intense the Wilson stuff is before. And so it's a year long, and so it comes out with this one through 12. How are, how are our teachers who haven't gone through Wilson
Yeah.
Measuring success with their kids?
Great question. So the Wilson program is for our most at-risk students who need intensive reading support. So when I said that strong statement of why I couldn't live here?
Yeah, okay.
Because my son needed that.
Gotcha, okay.
Due to his IEP, right?
Right.
So that is the reading specialist underneath your, the IEP needs to state that you need to go to the reading specialist. And then we ensured that each of them was trained in Wilson, which is a multi-sensory approach.
Okay.
It's very intensive, the type of feedback hope all of them receive, super intensive from a Wilson expert. Then underneath that, we have MTSS. And they do targeted interventions and progress monitoring, using everything from the literacy tasks of iReady to foundations to whatever the student needs.
Okay.
Then we have in tier one, in the regular classroom, we have our materials that we're using in our iReady. And the next step in full transparency is primary, we need to change our assessments for literacy for tier one.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Helpful. Thank you very much. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. G?
I'm wondering about the use of video. It's so powerful for changing teacher practice. It's what we're doing all the time in early childhood, at least I'm doing.
So something more, what do you mean by that?
Just the use of video. I'm sort of curious if teachers are using video to reflect on their own practice.
Oh, I would love to get there. I mean, we're at the point.
I just saw that lovely video. And of course, it's not teacher practice, but it's still child practice. But it's, I'm just, it's, it's a super powerful.
It is, it is. We now, so one of my dreams is that we get to the point where we're not doing the learning walks, but the teachers are doing the learning walks of each other. And then Jamie took a really brave, courageous step in inviting her lead teachers to join our learning class on the TSG. But now we are hearing teachers saying, oh, I want to come to your classroom.
That's super.
So we just want to formalize it, whether it's called Japanese lesson study instructional rounds, whatever we call it, it's just important to have a protocol and keep it tight and focused.
Protocols matter, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director Roback. Okay. Moving on. J. We have J. 1 through 3, which is resignations, leaves of absence. The resignations include some of our folks retiring. And appointments, which I'm not going to go through because it's everything from chaperones out to coaches for next spring. So do I have a motion for J. 1 through 3?
I'm moved.
Moved by Belrosa, seconded by Mr. Ball. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. God, Virginia puts tabs. All right. K. Business office recommendations. We have K. 1 through 16, which includes everything from our treasurer's report, the revenue appropriations, status report, our internal claims. Some key things around summer transportation. Just go through a couple of these. And the budget transfers that we need. And at the end, you'll see a couple of tax refunds for folks who argued their assessment and are owed tax refunds. So we have a motion for K. 1 through 16. I'm Ms. Belrosa. I seconded. Mr. Ball, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I always have a good feeling when Ms. Belrosa is my first on business recommendations. I know she's gone through it. Okay. Board action items. We have L. 1 through Oh my God. L. 1 through 14. And while it is all important, there are some things at the back, which is a couple of things I mentioned. One thing I mentioned, this is the first reading of the cellphone and other electronic devices policy. And again, that's first reading. So people read it, provide feedback, it'll come back to the policy committee, and then we'll have a second reading. Anything you want to say there, Dr. Ursig?
Yes, if I could just add, today, everybody who has their cellphone and email listed with the district got an email from me outlining how to read the policy, provide feedback on the policy. It is a first read. We would anticipate doing a second read in July so that we can meet the August 1st deadline. A couple of things just to point out for those listening at home, right? So this prohibits during the instructional day, so when they walk into the building to 2:18 at the secondary level, their cell phones, earbuds, and smartwatches, anything electronic, right? So it's not just cell phones, it's also earbuds, smartwatches. There are exceptions for those who maybe have a 504, medical needs, our health plan that outlines it. We, as a district, are purchasing yonder pouches for our secondary students. At the elementary level, they just keep it in their bookbags as they have done successfully for most part for that. And there is specific languages about how parents can get ahold of their child, right? By calling the main office first and foremost. We can get a note to our child, or that we can call the child down when they have a free time in their day to make that phone call home. So please review it. There's a link to review it, and then there's a box underneath just to provide feedback so that we can take the feedback on the first Tuesday of July to update the policy for the board meeting on the 8th.
Okay. And again, I'll reiterate, just so it's really clear, especially for anybody listening in, or we are man, we were working on this because we felt it was important to do. It's been mandated by the state now. So I had hoped to beat the state mandate. We didn't. And so by August 1st, every district in the state has to have this policy. Okay? All right. So motion for L. 1 through 14. Move. Mr. Meyer, seconded. Ms. Keldor. Discussion, questions? Yes?
Well, I just want to make that, that the laws, that the laws, that there needs to be a policy, but I didn't want people to think that there's no room in this policy for feedback and implementation, right? So it's not that it's mandated that schools have this policy, but that schools have a policy.
Right.
And so we welcome, you know, people's engagement in the conversation.
Yeah, I think it's also kind of on that note, sorry, to point out that this particular policy really was generated from the committee, right? Oftentimes, we get policies from Erie One or from New York State School Board Association. This policy from beginning to bottom was really like generated from the committee and the feedback from it. So it is, it should be unique to sororities.
Yep.
Yes.
I have a question. I haven't been to a policy meeting yet, but does the committee involve people other than on this board? Are there teachers and?
Mm-hmm. Community members, yep. Absolutely.
So we invite anybody, first Tuesday of the month, anybody is welcome?
Yeah.
Super fun.
We have a, we have a couple of parents.
Oh, I mean, people should know, and this is where people have opinions, so I'm glad we opened it up to them.
It's open up to everybody.
Perfect.
It has to be a public meeting.
Okay.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Board discussion items. Number one, district safety plan.
So just wanted to highlight a couple of things and also kind of point out that in the email that went today, there is also kind of a public comment on our district safety plan. So when you open up the document, you will see that there are changes made to it in the document, so you can just kind of scroll through and find those changes. Just wanted to call out a couple of things in particular. One is that we are, for the first time, specifying that doors should be closed and locked during, throughout the day, right? So every classroom, particularly those with kids and with staff, should be closed and locked throughout the day. We added language about earthquakes. Exactly, we had an earthquake, was it two years ago now? So we kind of addressed those concerns that came up about what to do. We incorporated the cellphone lang, a kind of a subsection of the cellphone language into the district safety plan. In particular, that, right, during an emergency, students should have their phones away, right? They should not be on their phone, right? If it's a, if we're going to lockdown, the best thing to do for anybody is to leave your desk, leave the front of the room, go to a spot in the classroom that's out of sight. That's the most important thing, right? Being on your phone texting mom and dad cannot happen during an emergency. It actually makes things worse, according to the law enforcement officers that I speak to. We also added language about the maximum classroom temperature. That was, that's also a new legislation this year, so that's also included in there.
Dr. Ursig, on that one there, how, did you, did it get discussed? Because we had a little bit of a conflict, right? So the doors should be closed and locked, but then one of the remediation things for the hot rooms is to open the doors.
Yes, so that was in the template. We took that out of the template and said that it is important for all of our doors to be closed and locked.
Okay.
To protect everybody.
Got it. Thank you.
Just to address the maximum temperature, since it has been, as shared during the budget presentations, we have been able to go ahead and purchase window AC units for those rooms that have been particularly hot over the years. So the 600 wing now has air conditioning. And then elementary schools, kind of the rooms that are still kind of, are subject to get over that 88 degrees, do have ACs in them now.
So 88 is the max?
It is the max.
You have to start remediating it when it hits 82.
Okay.
Measure that three feet above the floor in the middle of the room.
Yes.
Details are, details are important.
And, and just because a classroom is 88 degrees, right? So we can also move students throughout the building. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to send kids home. It also talks about being where practicable, right? So if you think about a heat wave, right, are we going to be sending students to a hotter location at home than they are in school? So it's all going to kind of take into play.
Take into play. But we, we think, based on some of the things we've done in the budget, and this, we can address it, especially the 600 wing here.
Yep.
Cahill is already pretty well off with.
With the new windows and ACs from last year, when we had that heat wave last year, everything was in fairly well.
Okay, great. Anything else on the safety plan?
No.
All right.
So I'll go right into district code of conduct. So that was also sent out today with our code of conduct updates and as well as providing feedback for that. In that code of conduct, we've adjusted the language about the possession of electronic devices. We have changed the appeals process. So, right, if somebody appeals it to me and then it ultimately appeals it to the board, there was previously no timeline for that. It would be the next scheduled board meeting. So theoretically, if somebody had filed appeal tomorrow, they'd have to wait a whole month before the appeal was answered. So as the policy committee with feedback have changed that to be a 10 calendar day, we have to have a meeting within 10 calendar days. So that will speed up that appeal process. We adjust some infractions, so once again, things have come up over, over the course of the year, right? So if student was misbehaving in the cafeteria, we didn't necessarily have a cafeteria code that corresponded to it. So we now have a building level code kind of for those, for those things. We have, we add a specific language about sexually offensive conduct, insubordination, and then the electronic device insubordination as well as there. Once again, if there, there is a deadline through, on July 8th on that, so if there's any feedback, if we can have it by July 8th, so that we can address it hopefully at the meeting that night. So if you get it in before 10, that'd be appreciated, and we can go from there.
You're breaking the mic.
Yeah, ah, yeah, I broke, I broke all seven of them. Don't work. Okay, anything, any questions or any, these are board discussion items, so any feedback on either the safety plan or the code conduct by anybody? I feel like I'm at a press conference.
Yeah. About this one too?
Yeah, right. Yeah, give me another one, it doesn't work.
I just like to.
Christine, yeah.
I just like to say.
I was looking that way.
I, I, we did discuss these changes in the policy committee meeting, so I mean, these are very practical changes, and I think everybody had the opportunity to participate, at least it was in that meeting. But this is one of the huge areas, and Mr. Yaxi mentioned it, and Dr. Ursig mentioned it. This is one of these big areas where public participation and feedback is, is wanted. Hey, we desire that. So again, everybody thinks parents, you know, kind of, school ends, June's over, and it's summer, right? But the work of getting your school ready for September begins literally July 1st, you know, if not a lot sooner, I think I mentioned last time. Something like this is a conversation you don't want to lose track of if you're a parent, and it's something you want to participate in. That's it.
Yes, Christine, sorry.
Just a question I had in regards to the code of conduct. Last year, there was all that work done to reword the code of conduct, make it tier level. How has that gone as a district? I guess is my, it's the first year that we've kind of gone through that code of conduct from that work. And what, you know, what is the feedback that the district has? Is it working? Is it not working? Is, you know, interested to hear.
Sure.
That's a great question.
So some of the changes have come, some of the changes have come out of conversations that we've had as administrators that have shared with us, so those tweaks in there kind of take that feedback. Part of our work, though, is at the end of the school year to run the report to see how many infractions there were and what categories, and kind of look for trends and see where we need to address those proactively. To do kind of a full comparison between the old code of conduct and the new code of conduct may be a little misleading because categories have changed. So, and it's also us having the conversation about the code of conduct, it seemed to have a really heightened awareness of the code of conduct this year. So I think that that kind of awareness of it, and the actual, you know, interest in reading it and trying to follow through with what the tiers are, I think do have a change. So we will share out in a future board meeting, kind of a more complete answer of how we thought it went.
Great. Okay, the next one is, I had mentioned it earlier in my remarks, district enrollment and instructional model. So we've been having, you know, high-level conversations about how we would go and start to take sixth grade and move them up here to the main campus here, right? And there is a myriad of things, and the, I wouldn't even say 40,000 feet, but there are 50,000 feet to conversations. But there, it is, it's something that's going to need to happen based on elementary school population and where we are, and be able to create additional space. And then also in offhand conversations with some teachers, that the sixth graders are ready to be up here. They are more, they are closer to a seventh grader in their actions and kind of maturity than they are to a third and fourth grader and a fifth grader. So this is something that's not going to be on the agenda once, it's going to have to be on the agenda several times over the coming months. There's a discussion of, you know, do we reach out to and engage a consulting group that does this type of things and making sure that, right, there's not only, there is personnel involved, there is the students, you know, on how you would move them, there is definitely, you know, building changes and updates that are going to need to happen to corner them off. So this is on here because I asked for it, because I wanted to start to get it out into the public. that we are talking about it, you know, transparency, that the word of the day, and getting people understanding that this is coming. And, and that it is not, as was mentioned a year ago, it is not, we're not talking about redistricting, right? We're not, that, that word that happened, you know, that is not what we're talking about. We're talking about creating a true sixth through eighth grade up here and the things that are going to have to go in with that. As with everything, I, I like to go fast. Not September of '25, I'd like to have it done by September of '26. To me, if you're going to go do something, go do it. And, and, but it's got to be done right. There are things, like I said, around the building, around safety and things like that, that have to be taken into account. So we're not going to go fast just to go fast, but we're also going to make sure that we're doing this, you know, quickly and very efficiently and taking everything into account, so.
I have a question about that. Surprise, surprise.
Thanks.
Oh. Is there a task force or something? Who's leading that and how is it getting organized to get that work done, to move it forward?
No, we have not, we, we, like I said, we've had high level, there will be. You know, from a, you know, a committee perspective, that's up to Dr. Ursig on how he structures, how we're going to go do it. You know, I, I tend to look at the people around this table as a task force.
I just want to make sure teachers and the public and.
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean, that's what I'm talking about. There are so many different pillars that have to be evaluated and looked at. Everything from the professional component to the student component, to the environment component, all those have to be looked at individually.
Just some other kind of bits of information, just kind of put maybe some things in a little bit of context. So.
Saying I just threw it out there?
No.
Maybe.
So in 20, in 2004, the district had 3,425 students. This is all publicly available information.
This is good.
Okay, in '23, '24, we had 2,270 students. And this year, 2,282 students. So this information is all publicly available for that, so I specifically chose those numbers.
What was the middle number?
'23, '24, so last school year was 2,270 students. Okay?
Yep.
Back in 2004, in grade seven through 12, we had 1,755 students in, on this campus, okay? Last year on this campus, we had 1,130 students. Okay? If we look at K6, back in 2004, we had 1,670 students. And currently in K6, we've got one, or sorry, last year in K6 was 1,140 students. Right, so we have lost, like, right, rough math, like a third of our population around. So, right, hence the, that the available space for those things. Other kind of things to think about, just kind of timeline-wise, would be to do any kind of grade reconfiguration from the state. We do have to apply to the state by March of the year prior that it would start. So that's kind of a deadline for when, to kind of, kind of keep things in mind as we go through. The other thing to think about is a formal enrollment study. So I have my spreadsheet where I look at birth rates and I project out, and I'm pretty close, knock on wood. But, you know, there is a lot of development in Sarkis, but it's, we're not seeing a lot of kids come out of it, right? And, right, so it's one thing for me to say it, based on, you know, the numbers that I have. I have, Heidi has pulled information from, you know, Farmhouse Commons, the Summit, all those things, we know those kids. But it's hard to, sometimes to convince the public that while all this building is going on, it's not producing students for us. So perhaps having a, kind of a formal enrollment study that would kind of dig into those things and kind of publicly say, you know, the average, you know, occupants per household is now two point something, whereas in the past it was three plus, you know, maybe four, to get that information out there as well, to get the whole complete picture, right, so that we're not doing something and then kind of going, walking it back a couple of years down the road.
Okay. All right. Yeah, anybody else, Bill, anybody else?
No, that, that actually was my question. I was going to ask if we were considering a formal, you know, kind of a population enrollment, kind of a study, and I think it's a great, great way to go. To go fast, you need to go slow, right, sometimes, and, and details.
Yeah.
So that's a great approach. We have a, we have, we have a declining, you know, enrollment. I mean, it's, it's been the case for a long time. So to put it out there is commendable.
Can I just, I go?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if it's working.
Yeah, it's like, hey. That one works, Tim's works.
That one works?
Yeah, it works. Three years.
So my question just is, as we go forward with this in the next, you know, at the next board meeting or at August board meeting or September, will we get a more formal plan as to how we're going to move forward with creating a committee or getting public input or, you know, are we going to lay that out?
Like a high-level project, like, say, hey, here's more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, if that's, you know, with the direction of the board, I'd be happy to put together what I would prefer, the kind of the path we'd like to take and to get feedback on it.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
That's a count.
Thank you.
Christine, you had something?
Yep, just, I know you said, we don't want to move that quick, you know, we don't want to move slowly, but we don't want to move quickly, but, you know, we're saying now we're in June and this decision has to be made by March. That, to me, is a pretty quick timeline for such a dramatic change. So, I mean, what is the leeway? I know that's an SED of adding the sort of decision in concept, saying this is what we want to do, but then take another year to officially, you know, do the plan and make sure it's done right. Because, you know, as Jeff said, it really needs to be done right for it to be successful, I think. So just, you know, that's one of my feedback when we say go slow. But here we are in June and with the decision to be done in March, that doesn't seem that slow, in my opinion. And so just one of my, you know, thoughts on it.
Okay. Anything else, anybody else? Okay, committee reports, all the committee. You're up first.
Nothing to report.
Facilities, I think we, you got any, a couple of updates?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So for facilities, they work at Morris Elementary School and the pavement. The site work is going to be starting as soon as students are out for the summer. Well, I should think after July 4th, I stand corrected. That does mean that the playground will be closed off for the public over the summertime, while that work can get done safely. So, you know, for those of you that frequent there often, make sure there's no fencing or anything around it, be safe. We had hoped to perform a capital outlay project this summer to make more ADA compliant egresses at Riccardi Elementary School. One out of the back door by the kindergarten wing and then one out of, by the cafeteria. We did not have any successful bids, we didn't have any bids when we went out to bid the first time. We did contact, or our architect contacted our site work, Del Signor, to see if they would be interested in it, and the price that they gave for the site work component, not even the, the, saving the doors, was well over the $100,000. So we are working with our architects to see if there's other means to go about to acquire somebody to do maybe one of the entrances and a doorway to scale it back. Hopefully, maybe we'll reach out to some local contractors to see if they'd be willing to bid on it if we go out to bid again for that.
If we can't, what happens to that $100,000?
Michelle?
If you don't have the 100, we have $100,000.
We have $100,000 that we have to spend there, right?
Yeah.
And what if we don't get any bids or there's no other way to do it? What happens, that we lose it?
It would go to fund balance.
It would go to fund balance.
And, yeah, you wouldn't get any aid.
Okay, got it. That answers, that answers my question. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so moving forward, right, when the voters approve the budget, there were some options in there, right, in terms of AC units, additional flooring. Flooring may be the way to go because we've been able to get it accomplished, but those conversations will continue to happen in that facilities committee meeting.
Okay, great. Policy, I think we.
Yeah, I think we covered it. You know, it's, we, the next meeting, I think it's July 1st. It is open to anybody who would like to participate, certainly families, parents, you know, teachers. We've oftentimes, you know, put out the call and really tried to encourage people to, to participate so that our policies aren't top-down or feel like they're top-down, right? We want to have that, that level of engagement. And so even though some of these policies come to a surgery, can come to us in a, you know, pre-written format, the opportunity to customize them, as Dr. Ursig pointed out, is, is, is really there, you know? So that next meeting will be July 1st. Obviously, the big ticket items that we did discuss are on the agenda today. The maximum temperature for school buildings and the use of cellphones and other electronic devices. Those conversations are ongoing. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. All right. It's a personnel matter, right?
It's in the vote on.
Nothing.
Oh, for, for the session, personnel and contract.
Yes, okay. So I would propose a motion to recess into executive session for a personnel matter discussion and contract negotiation update.
Do you want to overturn the public recognition?
Oh, we skipped over that, yeah, sorry.
It's because you did it at the beginning, but now that's the first one at the end.
Yes, so, sorry, I went right from policy to that, so. So our second public comment, so this now is anything that is in the agenda. If anybody has any comments or questions on. Okay, no, all right. So back to proposed executive session. I'm Ms. Keldar, second by Mr. Wells. Any question? Nope, okay. Favor?
Aye.
Okay, just a note, when we do come back out, there'll be nothing else up. Will be nobody on there to adjourn the meeting?
To reconvene to open session?
So.
Hi.
Hi. Motion to future board meetings, they have it wrong, it's July 10th, not, uh, not. Meeting.
So moved.
By Mr. Ball. Seconded.
Second.
By Dr. Haas.
Thank you.
Enjoy the grandkids.
I can't get out of here quick.
Good night.
Thank you. All right, let's go, man. Holy moly.